Today is Thursday, May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is four oh four P. M. I would like to call to order the public hearing for the Town Council of Bowling Green, Virginia. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under law, invincible with liberty and justice for all. I'll now take a roll call. Councilwoman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Voight.
Here.
Councilman Webb.
Here.
Councilman Chenault.
Here.
Councilwoman Coyle. Councilman Stork.
Here.
Councilman Hagan.
Here.
All members are present. We have a quorum. We will now move on to new business. We will open the public hearing for the notice of proposed real property tax increase. At this moment, I will turn this over to the Town Manager. Do you have anything to add at this point?
No, we'll just go ahead and open up for public hearing.
Okay. I am going to give you the rules for people coming forward. And before you come forward, I will first read a correspondence that I received from a citizen. When you come forward to speak, please state your name, your address. You will have three minutes to. You will address me, the Chair. As much as we would like to respond to you, our rules do not allow for us to give you a response. I will, please, I know that passions and tempers run strong about certain topics and money is one of them. I please ask you to be respectful and refrain from using profanities. I will now. Oh, yes, and please sign in on the sign-in sheet. I will now open public hearing. My name is Cindy Placinsky, one oh seven South Main Street, Bowling Green, and one hundred South Main Street, Bowling Green. Dear Councilmembers, my husband and I have lived in Bowling Green for more than thirty-five years. We have run businesses here and currently own and rent the building on one hundred South Main Street. We are very concerned that financial decisions will be made that negatively impact our ability to enjoy the life in this town. Too much tax is not a good idea, especially at a time when we are all recovering from the last four years of an incompetent federal government. Please consider very carefully any amount of increase in tax burden for the citizens of this town. Tax increases should be minimal, and the funds collected should be used for specific benefit to all citizens of this town. Keep taxes low. Thank you for listening. Cindy and John Placinsky. Would you please add this into the public record?
My name is Jeff Sealy. I live on Travis Street. I am here due to all the phone calls I've gotten on this issue. While I've spoken to many of you on the phone, I have not reached everyone, but I know what the questions have been and the misconceptions. That's why I have written comments. Let's first look at reassessment. The General Assembly requires property reassessment every six years for the simple reason that they do not provide local services.
Ooh. Go ahead.
They do not provide local services, but their county is required to do so. To do this requires a revenue stream, which we know as real estate taxes, the value of which is determined by reassessment. The statute in no way requires that any locality raise the tax rate in response to reassessment. A reassessment is not the same as a tax increase. I had many questions about services received for taxes. I can only respond to this from the county perspective in a list of services, but can tell you that the town government does not provide any of the funding for these. Emergency services such as ambulance and fire department, schools, where presently one child in school per year right now is at thirteen thousand dollars a year, the landfill, the county court system, and a goodly chunk of the county sheriff's office, as well as the recreation department and its programs that are provided by the county. So let me repeat. A reassessment is not the same as a tax increase. To further make this point, any governing body can raise or lower taxes at any budget time with the majority vote without reassessment. In fact, many years reassessment happens, especially within the town, and has chosen to equalize or neutralize the rate, which drops in, it coincides with the reassessment coincides and the residents have, the rate actually comes down due to reassessment because you have to equalize the rate. So an equalized rate right now is what we're all talking about. Using the county as an example, this year reassessment, the county dropped the old tax rate of seventy-eight cents per hundred to fifty cents per hundred to the equalized rate, and then raised the tax rate two cents to fifty-two cents. Many of you told me is that within the town, the rate has actually resulted in a slight increase, the same as last year, or in a number of cases, a reduction. The issue that brings us here today is that the town's equalized rate is six and a half cents, which result in the scenario I just described, a very slight increase, stay the same, or a drop. However, their advertised rate is twenty cents, which would more than triple the tax rate here. As an example, if you pay four hundred dollars a year in town taxes, you are looking at twelve hundred plus a year. In addition to all the proposed hikes and surcharges on utilities, I know that the figure, the, in addition, there's also increased taxes and surcharges or, or taxes, or not taxes, but surcharges and additional on the tax, on utilities. I know that the figure of eleven cents has been tossed around since it was the old town rate before the assessment. That figure has no meaning whatsoever and is gone. To pay close to what you had paid in previous years, the rate would need to be six and a half cents.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy.
Good evening, ma'am. Okay, good evening, Chair and members of the Town Council. Good to see everybody again. My name is Rick Hanley, and I live in one-on-one Lacy Lane here in Bowling Green, and I just want to basically just delineate a few points here, just not really get into a lot of detail, but just some questions and a few statements. One is, I have a question as to why the tax increase is so large. Two, I want to ask is, have you explored other alternatives besides a tax increase, such as increasing other fees, looking at different ways to be able to do this without placing such an onerous restriction and burden upon the taxpayers? Also, looking at the two thousand and twenty-six proposed budget, it appears that town's admin is top-heavy for a small town. This is in Fairfax County, this isn't, you know, Henne Riko County, it's Caroline County and town of Bowling Green. And perhaps we could look at creative ways to trim the budget before asking us as the consumers, as the individuals and businesses, to quote-unquote partner with you by raising our taxes. I would also like to ask it, have you looked at, how's this money going to be spent? You know, usually the saying is power to taxes, power to destroy. There's a lot of emphasis placed on nowadays, everybody doing their share, paying their fair share and all this, that there are basic necessities. This should only be considered when other options, looking at trimming the budget, looking at other ways, just like I have to, just like I have to, you have to, just like we have to do as business owners, as individuals. When we make, we have to make ends meet, we have to cut some things in order to pay for some things. Placing this kind of tax burden is not going to be, I feel, a wise way to make decisions. And I understand that taxes need to be used for its basic essential services, water, sewer, the fire, police, and so forth. I understand that. But we need to also understand that raising taxes on individuals and businesses places undue burden upon those who are struggling as it is right now to make ends meet. We don't have an option when taxes are levied, we don't get an option on that. We pay our taxes or we face serious consequences for not doing so. I own my house, I've been blessed to be able to own my house, but, you know, it is, it is pretty sobering to think that I own the house, but the property that I have the house on is owned by the town, it's owned by the county, and I'm basically renting. So I definitely take tax increases very seriously because I have to go down and look at balancing my budget, and I hope that the town would do the same. Margaret Thatcher once said, be very wary of high taxes because any government that has high taxation is giving itself more powers and the people less. So final things I want to say is basically again, taxes should only be considered when all other options have been explored. And before we're asked to be a partner of that, I feel like it's just good stewardship by the town to be able to look at ways we can trim the budget, look at ways we can trim, maybe perhaps this, maybe a top-heavy, what I've looked at in the proposed budget, and look at ways we can trim this before we ask everybody else to quote-unquote partner again. This is a great town. I love living here, it's been a blessing to be the past two years I live in this town, got to know many of you personally, been here before, so I do appreciate your time, and I do appreciate your consideration, and we will pray for God's wisdom to be upon you as you make this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. I have another letter I would like to read. This is from Danielle Bowie. Actually, I cannot read it, she did not include her address. Next person.
Good afternoon. My name is Pat Cropper. Can you hear, it's, I don't know how to work this thing.
It's still hot.
Okay. Two fifty-one North Main Street. I'm here to express my shock and concern over the proposed real estate tax, the meal tax, the water and the sewer rate increases. I urge each of the council members to reconsider your vote that you made on, I think it was the first of this year, regarding the proposed real estate tax, the proposed water and sewer increase, and also the meal tax. The seven percent meal tax is unwarranted. Restaurants have already faced higher food costs this year and other expenses that we've all faced. However, that's our bread and butter. If we want to go have a meal, if we want to just get out of the house, what happens when we increase everything and they can't pay it? So then they're gone, they're gone out of business. So here we are, poor Bowling Green, another business closed down. I don't want to see that. My husband and I moved away and moved back because we love this town. I am just really upset that this happened in a five-year period that we were gone, that we could have perhaps raised our hands and said, oh, let's try another avenue of trying to get these funds. I don't know how you can claim to go for funding when you don't have anything audited. You know, audited books tell a lot, un-audited books tell a lot. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cropper.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Board Members. Glenn McDermott, three five five Rover Drive, familiar with all of you folks, appreciate your work. My concern is here, as everybody's talked about, if you take the rate on the new assessment to twenty percent, that's an additional two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to the town. Do you all realize that, as you all looked at those numbers, two hundred and fifty-six thousand additional, that comes from each one of us? That's a difficult burden for us to bear. Question I would have is, most of that money is probably going to go to water sewer? You got an eight and a half million dollar grant application in? Are you really going to be able to get a grant application? You don't have audited books? Who's going to lend money to somebody that doesn't have audited books? If you got it, the rate's going to be very high. So I'm assuming that we're doing this because the responsibility of this council is to be a good steward to the money that we give you, and it seems to be a little bit uncomfortable now when things aren't going quite so well. So as council's responsibility, water sewer is critical, that's probably the most critical thing that you have to do as council to make sure that this town has safe water and sewer. That's one of the reasons I got on the council in two thousand and three, because there were issues with that. So I would, I would ask you all to really reconsider that. The, the rate of twenty percent is just seems extremely high. Like we said, it's about three times, and it's going to generate an additional two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. That would take you up to about four hundred twenty-six thousand. That's a lot, that's a tremendous amount. And remember, we have a aging population in this town, there's a lot of fixed income, we have about five hundred fifty houses in the town, so we don't have a big base to pull from. And the other thing I'd like to ask you about is, did you get a water sewer engineering study for this eight hundred, eight million, eight and a half million dollar grant? Have you had a study done with regards to that? If you haven't, you need to have that done, and that's a significant cost to do that properly. And I will tell you that we, there was one done sometime before, we did a water sewer plant down here. We had an eight million dollar assessment from the, from the people that did the estimate together for us. We ended up doing the project for eight million, for three million dollars, three point eight million dollars. So there's ways that you can look at these things. Dan was a big part of bringing that number down, you have expertise here, tap the expertise that you have. Don't tax us this amount, it's just way over the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. Next.
Good evening, Mayor Gamble, members of Town Council, my name's Arthur Houli, here to address some of the concerns regarding the proposed real estate tax increase. It's come to my attention that there's a proposal to double or even triple the current real estate tax rate. I understand the goal is to close the deficit and support the financial stability of the town. However, I have serious concerns that I feel compelled to voice on behalf of myself and fellow citizens. While addressing the deficit is critical, a lack of transparency in prior planning should not be used as justification for now what feels like a financial emergency being placed on the shoulders of taxpayers. To that point, I'd like to reference a few concerns. Around two thousand and twenty-two, the council approved replacing outdated financial system at the cost of approximately two hundred thousand. I understand from staff that the system's now being replaced again. What impact does this have on the CIP depreciation schedules, and is this system expected to integrate with the counties? If so, what's the cost of the new system, and why was the anticipated, and was this anticipated during the initial purchase of the first one? Additionally, in two thousand and twenty-four, during the council's strategic retreat, a main priority was emphasized as the MOU with Caroline County. I ask you, after knowing that we entered into a MOU with Caroline County, how's that progressing? I come to find out that since that partnership with the county was established, we've turned over operational responsibilities to a third-party contractor. So why invest public time, resources, and effort with only, with the county only to pivot to an outside firm? In a study done by the county in two thousand and twenty-three, which is right here, there's approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand, that was noted in deficits to our wastewater and water treatment facility. So with that being said, what's, what's the town doing with that? There's partnerships that are out there to assist the town. I would encourage, because the town's not involved with VA WARN, which is a mutual aid agreement with other localities, including towns and cities and local counties and jurisdictions throughout the state, that we look to enter into that. It's something that can assist us in times of crisis, one that I would say we're in right now. So I hope through the public comments that we can all come together with a solution. And while I understand taxes are, are going to need to be increased as costs go up, I hope that we all make the right decision and can provide for the citizens of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houli. Next.
Peggy Houli, one thirty-four Lafayette Avenue. Mayor Gamble, council members. My concern is proposed tax increase. I feel that when the people come here to Town Hall, when we vote for each of you that we vote for, we do it with trust and faith. You will do the best for us also. I feel that this increase, I know how no one voted or who is even considering it, but I feel that it is not fair, and I can only say shame on you.
Thank you, Ms. Houli. Next, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you for the time. I apologize, I'm not as prepared as normally I am for these kinds of meetings. After reviewing the proposal that you folks had put out online.
Excuse me, your name and address, please.
Scott Pace, two zero four Meadow Lane. After reviewing the documents that you folks put out online, it looks like this tax increase, you know, the, the equalization is about half the price of the current tax. So you not only want to double what we were getting due to that equalization, but now you want to tax additional upon it, plus increase, meal tax, water rates, sewer rates, you know, for, for water that we have a hard time drinking, okay? And not only that, but it appears that most of this is just to build reserves, not to use for any project, but it's to build your reserves. That is a waste of funds. I think you saw in the last election, people spoke up, they want tax cuts, and here you are doing massive increases. It's ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pace. Next citizen, please. If you could come up, if you want to speak after this person, and it would help expedite this with citizens coming forward. Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Linda Keith. I am the owner of DK Firearms on two oh two North Main Street. And while I cannot vote here, my business is here and you receive my tax money. And I have been watching your meetings and looking at all this information that you're putting out here. This budget, I don't agree with it, as everybody here has said. We understand that taxes have to go up for some things, but where is this money going to? To what is it going to go? Because all I see is general fund, general fund. You need a little bit more information, and you need to be a little bit more transparent to let us know what's going on here, because trying to call Town Hall and get an answer from somebody, it's almost impossible. It's almost impossible to get anything, any information. This is, we are in informations age where you can go on Facebook, you can go on your website, you can, information should be there, ready and available at everybody's fingers, and it's not. So while I read everything, I guess the biggest thing that stands out to me is transparency. You're not, you're not. So I'd like you to think about that. I also would like you to think, you're all supposed to live in the town? You're all going to be able to pay these taxes like everybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keith.
Ryan Gamble, one twenty-two Lakewood Road. Tax increase. Well, I understand we're dealing with issues that should have been addressed years ago by prior councils. Infrastructure should be funded by the fees charged, and that doesn't appear to have been the case. Looks like increased fees are in the works, and that's fine, but it doesn't change where we are. That being said, the tax increase, where's it going, where's it going? I can get behind capital improvements. Looking at the budget, it's impossible to tell where salaries begin and contractors end. I understand we're using contractors to complete our audits, that's fine. This increase, once we get out from under the situation we're in, in the future, will it be used to hire more staff? I've noticed through the years that increased staff seems to equal more chaos and less service. We can't keep, we can't keep an ADA door open during the day, that's illegal. DC's an hour and a half up the road. ADA official comes down here, that, that will be an issue. That's a huge issue. The, the town can't figure out who owes property taxes. It was quick to send out a nasty gram out to some of his citizens with no phone number or contact information, and while we're on that, how long does it take for the town to send a nice gram apologizing for the screw-up and acknowledging its mistake? You know, create a paper trail for the citizens that were affected. Last time something like this happened to me, I was in the middle of a refinancing, and it cost me an eleven-hundred-mile road trip and attendant expenses to get that squared away. So I urge the council to think, to consider, if you can't tell me where this increase is going in next year, year following, I would vote no. And I'm not saying that an increase isn't needed, but is it really needed tonight? Can you sit down and think about it for a month and tell me, tell me in a month where this is going? If you can't do that, no, just do your homework. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Next.
My name is Kathy Self, and I live at two forty-three Meadow down in Bowling Green. The only thing I've got to say, and I'm asking each and every one of you from your heart, please realize you've got a lot of elderly citizens, myself included. We live on a fixed income. You start increasing the taxes, we're not going to be able to keep up with it and keep our homes. We're going to end up having to sell them and move someplace where we can afford what's going on. So when you start voting, just remember, you've got a tremendous amount of elderly citizens that live in this town.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Self.
Hello, council members, mayor. My name is Pam Weldon, three 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 North Main Street, Bowling Green, Virginia. And I love this town. I worked really hard to get my business going. We just put a ton of money into restoring our house and working with the rest of the businesses. When you could ask my husband Bobby, when he, he talks to people, he says, when we first moved here, this town was dead, nothing was going on. We have added so many businesses, and every single business in this town works their fingers to the bone to provide a service to this town. I work all the time between my antique store and my estate sale company, providing a service for this town. So people come to this town, we've added another show, we support and work with the other businesses. We are also elderly on a fixed income. We could throw in the towel tomorrow and have no problems, get plenty of money for our house, and go off and live a nice little retirement somewhere, but I don't want to. I love this town, and it means a lot to me. I feel like if you guys increase these taxes, we already, we're on a fixed income too, we don't make a ton of money. Okay, so why is my business important? I think it's important to the history of the town, I think it supports the other businesses, and you're going to run us out. You're going to run us out, you're going to run the other businesses out, and then where are you going to look for, for the money? Because nobody's going to be here to give you the money. People are going to just say, that's it, I've had enough, I, you know, the amount of money that we, I can't tell you the percentage exactly, but it's a large percentage of our, of our money every month that we have to put away for to pay our town, our county, and our, and our insurance on our house. Our house is paid for. Our house is paid for, yay. It's not paid for. We struggled just to pay that, and with the utilities going up and the cost of everything going up, and as I'm hearing, there's not a definite reason why you're increasing these taxes. I'm at a loss to why are you increasing them so much? You're going to hurt this town, you're going to bury this town. I think that you guys need to reconsider this. I think you need to be supporting all of the businesses and looking into how you can make some cuts like other people were talking about. I'm not real good about all that kind of stuff, but I am going to say a prayer. And I'm going to pray that you vote your heart and you ask God to help us save this town and make it continue to go in a forward path. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weldon. Next citizen, please.
My name is Peter Hossi. I'm at 247 North Main Street. And first, I want to thank all of you for your service. What you're doing is hard, and it's a significant responsibility, and thank you for being here. Second, I want to apologize because I'm a little bit behind the curve here. My understanding is, I think that this vote has already been done. Okay. In which case, I just want to offer a couple of suggestions. When someone once said that, you know, "He who is faithful with little will be given much." And you guys have a very significant responsibility to all of us. And you're asking for much. And I'm not pointing fingers, but I am suggesting that it would probably be helpful if we understood how we got here, what changes can be made that help us to correct where we are now, and how we're going to, how we're going to make those changes. Thank you for your time and attention, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi. Next citizen, please.
Hello, good afternoon, mayor, council, town council. Thank you for letting us have this hearing tonight, today. So my name is Rachel Phillips, I live at 123 Lafayette Avenue. And my concern is not so much the people that are working, it's the citizens that are on fixed incomes. I have several people that live on Lafayette who are retired, who have fixed incomes. They would lose their house if you tripled this. And I think our town is so great because we are like family, and if you do this, you're going to have people who have to move out of this town. And I think it's just crazy, and people aren't going to come to this town if the taxes are out of control. And people want to know where their money's going. I think transparency is great. I think let the citizens know exactly where the money's going. And I know that it's not been raised a long time, the taxes, but maybe gradually instead of from, I mean, six to 20, it's crazy. So, and also, when I moved here 10 years ago, I've lived in Carolina my whole life, I love Bowling Green, and I've always wanted to live here, and 10 years ago when I moved here, Main Street was like nothing. There was nothing there, really, you know? Now I go out there Saturday morning, it's hard to find a parking spot with the, you know, businesses and the market and everything. And if you raise, I feel like these prices, businesses are going to leave, and it's going to be dead again. And people aren't going to want to be here anymore. And so I just would like you to think about that when you go to vote today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Next citizen, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Heather Lewis, 122 Davis Court. I live in the town and work for the county. But what hasn't been mentioned is the taxes that are going to be put on to renters. So rent prices are going to go through the roof. I'm a renter. But also utility bills. So, single mom, working two jobs already. Have you thought about rent going up and utilities going up? No one is going to be able to afford to live here at all. Not renters, not elderly people, not single moms. So I would definitely reconsider or ask to be reconsidered, all the price increases and hikes and things like that, because if it goes up again, three jobs, just to support my kids. So please consider and reconsider and look at the spectrum of everybody from A to Z. People on fixed incomes, single moms, I mean, it's going to hurt businesses. People aren't going to want to stop and travel because you got to pay all these taxes for food and all that other great mess. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next citizen, please.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Jessica Beal, I live at 127 Sunset. I also am a business owner in town. I'm here to offer the unpopular opinion, please don't murder me. I, do I like the proposal of the increase? No. Does it suck? Yeah. Is it going to put a lot of people in tough spots? Probably. But what I also don't like is the mishandling of our town for the last however many years. I'm frustrated that it seems, I could be wrong, but it seems like maybe the county has not offered the town the support that it needs. I'm frustrated that as a county resident, or sorry, as a town resident, I pay the same amount of county taxes, where many localities offer their towns a tax break so that they are not double-dipping, I guess, so to speak. Now, I understand that there are services that the county gives us that, you know, the town doesn't provide. I'm not illiterate to that, but I'm just frustrated. I'm frustrated that we are even in a position that we have to have this conversation because we've neglected to raise taxes in the past. My understanding is that during COVID, the rate went down with the intention of it coming back up, and then it never did. If it would have come up each year just a little bit, would people have been able to get used to it, you know, and not feel this massive jump? Maybe so. But overall, I can, I stayed up way too late last night reading every page of the proposed budget for the town, as well as the county. And I'm just, I'm frustrated we're in this position, but I get it. I get that we need to increase. I get that we can't function with a road that is about to be ripped up. I mean, that, as a business owner, that puts me in a really sucky place. Had things been appropriately dealt with in the past, had we been planning for these things, had we maybe even had, I don't know, a capital improvement plan? Would we be in a better position to have planned for these replacements, having better coordination with our residents and our business owners, whereas now it is this big emergency, which I get also. Anyways, I say all that to say, again, please don't kill me when I walk out of here, but I support the increase. I don't know necessarily what it should be, should it be the 13, should it be the 20? But I see the need for it. And I also would just like to thank you all for the work you do. And I would like to encourage everybody who's here, don't wait till you're pissed off on Facebook to come to a meeting, show up to these things, let your voice be heard. This is where we can actually advocate for ourselves and make changes in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Next citizen, please.
Madam Mayor, I'm Scott Sigmund, I live on Carey Street. I'm just trying to make sense of the assessment. I've gotten assessment letters in the mail recently, like everyone here. I think this assessment is hitting business and commercial properties particularly hard. In my case, I've seen a minimum assessment of one property of 68%, and the high side 195%. And that's resulted in an increase in levy on the low end of 33% and 95% on the high end. And I'm kind of troubled that going with a meals tax is another hit on business to try to close whatever budget gap we have. It's nice to see the town growing in the last few years, but businesses don't get a vote, but they can leave, or they can choose not to come here. So I just ask you to consider the business climate and future spending decisions and budgetary decisions. You know, the, my personal residence value hasn't changed that much, I can soak it up. But a lot of people can't, so just be aware of that, please. Also, I know there's a lot of people who'd like to be here or still at work. If you have another public hearing, please consider scheduling it when more of the community can attend. So I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sigmund. Next citizen, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Ashley, I live on 140 Lafayette.
Your last name, please.
Oh, sorry. Well, you're going to have it in record as Adams, but it's legally McGill.
Okay.
Haven't changed it everywhere yet. Now, some of you may know, my house is currently for sale. That being said, it doesn't mean I still don't come here and do my business. I will always be Bowling Green, I've lived here my entire life from birth up. And what I don't understand is, I get we do need to do a tax whatever, I understand that part, but maybe we could do like a very gradual increase if it has to be that way. That being said, when I spend my money here, I do it even with extra prices. It's a little high in some places, but I like the availability. I love the people, a lot of businesses in here I absolutely love, but if I have to make cuts as well, I'm not going to be able to support those businesses. I'll have to fix my own food, don't like to cook, but we'll have to, or, you know, mix my own drinks at home, and it's not to say against the business, it's just that I'm struggling now as it is. We maintain two residences, and we're making cuts as best we can, but we do pay our taxes, and I want to see this town continue to thrive because I still, I'm still coming here. I'm not leaving, leaving. But anyway, I just wanted to make that point clear. Oh, and also an unpopular vote, if we're paying out of these general funds for the Harvest Festival and the Christmas Parade, which I have loved my entire life, get rid of them. If it means saving us money and we don't have to pay for that, let Caroline pick it up or let somebody else come in and raise the money to put these events on. I mean, I've loved them, but if it's costing taxpayers money, we don't need it. It doesn't bring anything to the taxpayers. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Next citizen, please.
Good afternoon, members of council, my name is Katie Gibson, I live at 113 Lacy Lane, and I also own and operate Gibson Soft Serve at 101 South Main. I want to speak in support of the proposed tax adjustments, not because it's easy. Obviously, no one's very happy about this, but because I do believe it's unfortunately very necessary. Like many in our town, my family and my business are feeling the financial pressure. I'm sure most people are as well, costs are up across the board, and no one takes the idea of higher taxes lightly, but the reality is that our town has been stretching and outdated income and budget for entirely too long. And that's why we're here. We've been patching, patching holes instead of making real progress, literally and figuratively, for a very long time, at some point, something does have to give. This budget and tax increase is a big step toward catching up. It ensures we're not just maintaining basic services, but restoring and improving the things that we all depend on, obviously like water and sewer. These aren't luxuries, they are basic foundations of a healthy community. I appreciate that this council and also current staff are being honest about what it takes to provide these services responsibly. Postponing investment now only leads to bigger bills and tougher decisions down the road, which in my opinion is why we're all here today. This isn't really about spending more for the sake of it, it's about catching up to where we should have been all along. We can't keep asking our town to do more with less. This budget and tax increase are a very difficult but necessary reset, and I support it because I believe in the long-term well-being of our town. I urge you to take action now, don't continue to kick the can down the road like so many who came before us. Thank you for your hard work and for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Next citizen, please.
Good evening, mayor, town council, Ed Bonham, 170 Dickinson Drive. Coming in opposition to the 20% increase. I'm not as informed as I believe I normally would be, but I'd like to know, what are we cutting to decrease the amount that we could raise taxes? And what programs have we looked at for grant funding? And, and other things, I believe at one point there was a 14-house construction project with an $8 million federal grant funding and requirement to tie into the county water system that didn't get approved. So I'm kind of curious as to, why, I mean, I know why we're, I know some of the reasons why we're here, but I believe infrastructure needs to be improved, but what are we doing to find a better way to do it? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonham. Any other citizens? I will now close public comment. We will now move on to member comments. Councilwoman Davis.
I don't have any.
Councilman Voight.
Most comments that I'll have, you know, related to this, obviously will be when we talk about it later. So things not related to this, just to say that Clean Sweep actually went off pretty good. Don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Oh, you can't, oh, well, let me fix that.
Go ahead and repeat your comment, then.
Am I coming through now? All right, sorry about that. I was just mentioning positive experience I had with Clean Sweep over the weekend, and all comments, you know, related to what the public hearing is for, we're going to talk about later on, so. Thank you all for coming out.
Mr. Webb?
No, I don't have anything other than the budget discussion we're going to have later.
Thank you. Dr. Chenault?
No comments.
Ms. Coyle?
I don't have any comments, but I just want to thank everyone for coming here tonight and giving their comments as well.
Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I appreciate everybody coming out, and I appreciate your passion and your love for the town. And I just want you all to know that we too share those same feelings. And one thing in life that I've found out, misinformation is a terrible thing. And nobody is an expert on local government or all things like that, but, and I hate sitting up here and listening to y'all and not be able to address you and say anything back, we all do. I mean, it feels like our hands are tied, but we're not allowed to. So during this portion, I just want to say, I want, I hope you all stay for the next meeting. You know, this, this whole process is not something we came up with, it's prescribed by law. You know, we publicize a rate, I'm here to tell you, it's not going to be 20%, but we have to set a high number, and then we listen to you, and then we come in with what we think is fair. So there's nothing predetermined, there's nothing, because we're all, we're all writing the check too. So I challenge you all to stay and hear more of what we're doing with the money, why we have found ourselves in a terrible hole, a bad position, and what this responsible council is doing to try to fix it. And, and we're on the same page with you, and we want, and, you know, we live here in town too. So thank, thank you very much for your passion, and thank you for coming out. And one thing, the last thing I'll say is, I do want to revisit the, the change in the time of the meetings. I, I feel like it, it hasn't been a good thing. You know, I think we, we decided, well, shoot, nobody comes to our meetings. Why don't we make it more convenient for staff and us? And I don't think that's been the best thing, that's just my opinion, I think we need to go back to our later times. Thank you.
Mr. Hagman?
I do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's good to see you here. Usually, we only have one or two people. Everything that you basically discussed tonight and your concerns, we've been going over for the last two and a half years that I've been on council, but nobody's been here to voice their opinion until tonight, when we have to make a real hard decision. But I do appreciate your comments and your coming, and I would appreciate if more of you show up every meeting and voice your opinion at that time. Thank you.
As your mayor, I would like to thank each and every one of you for being here. And I implore you, come back. It, it's very disheartening for this council and myself to have these discussions and not to have your input. And it's great you're here tonight, but it seems like when it comes to the citizens, there has to be an emergency before you show up. Your government is only as good as you are. And I beg of each and every one of you to start becoming active and take an important role in your town government. and take an important role in your town government. Again, God bless. We are going to adjourn this meeting. And afterward, we will take a ten-minute recess before our next one. I ask for a motion for adjournment from council.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
I have a motion from Councilman Hagman. Do I have a second? Second for Councilwoman Coyle. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.